All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for joining us. This virtual public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities and Emergency Response is now reconvened at 1:00 P.M. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on September 30th of 2020. The second notice provided on October 5th of 2020, notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. The committee will hear testimony on Bill 315-35 LS, an act to add a new section 8503B4 to Article 5 into amends section 8505B3 of Article 5, all of Chapter 8, Title 12 Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing the aggregate capacity limit for net energy measurement calculations into establishing the rate at which customer generators are to be compensated respectively, also introduced by myself. I would like to provide the panel of participants with some general rules of conduct for this virtual public hearing. All participants must abide by rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including you must broadcast from a quiet room with little to no interruptions; you must broadcast from a room with adequate lighting specifically to ensure the participant's face is visible and not backlit, and ensuring that the participant's face is visible at all times when speaking. Virtual backgrounds are prohibited during the public hearing. Please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. The chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify, and individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name, title, and organization for record purposes. For group settings or more than one individual's present, please state your name before providing comment. We will begin with the panel of senators who shall complete their lines of questioning for each respective item on the agenda. Each member will be allowed to pose one question to an individual testifying for one round and be provided another round if necessary. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this rule of conduct will result in removal from the meeting room by the host. And I would like to begin first by welcoming my colleagues who are joining us today, beginning with Senator Therese Terlali, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, Senator Telo Titegui. I believe those are all the senators we have joining us today. We will now begin with Bill Number 315-35 LS, and I'll begin with my opening statement on the bill. Renewables are the future of Guam's energy generation. Guam needs to prepare for 100% renewable energy by 2045 as mandated by law, and this bill is one of many steps towards that future. Bill 315-35 LS allows for net metering, for the net metering industry to continue to grow until it reaches 20% of GPA's peak demand for generation. This bill protects all current and future net metering customers who enter below the 20% cap, ensuring that they are credited for the retail rate of energy. When the 20% cap is reached, a study shall be done on the cost benefits as well as the impacts of net metering. Renewable energy provided by net metering customers decreases our reliance on oil, and oil is the largest cost to our power bills, about 70 cents for every dollar. The price of oil is unpredictable, leading to unexpected increases in our power bills beyond local control. Energy from net metering customers, on the other hand, is cleaner, locally generated, and does not rely on the unstable cost of fossil fuels. According to a study done last year for the PUC, net metering was around 7% of peak demand. These private owners have invested in renewable energy, and they provide excess energy to GPA to distribute across the grid. These net metering customers enter long-term contracts with their providers, and any changes to the program will cause unforeseen costs and hurt the growth of the renewable industry on Guam. This bill provides the stability the industry needs under law to continue to grow. GPA has several energy storage systems in the works, allowing energy generated by net metering customers to be stored in the day and used in the night. Investing in renewables is not only better for the environment, it helps create local jobs within the renewable sector and moves us away from the fluctuating costs of oil. Technologies are constantly improving to make renewables cheaper, more efficient, more important to our grid. This bill is a step forward towards building a cleaner and greener Guam. All right, we'll begin with testimony now from those who have signed in on the sign-in sheet. We will go ahead and begin in order of how people signed up, and so that begins with the General Manager of the Guam Power Authority, Mr. John Beneventi. You are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senators, good afternoon. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 315-35 LS. The Guam Power Authority supports a balanced long-term energy plan with clean and renewable sources to ensure sustainable, resilient energy supply for the island residents, businesses, government, and visitors. The plan must be approached with scrutiny and deliberation because no two systems are the same. There are a cadre of issues that must be accounted for and examined, limitation placed, and/or removal thereof, and must not be arbitrarily established. The bill's author appely includes a requirement that a distribution impact study be conducted. However, the timing of such study must be prior to changing the current NEM cap. GPA is currently conducting a distribution impact study to determine the effect of customer generators in the various distribution circuits. This study will identify potential issues and benefits of distributed generation and determine what caps, if any, need to be placed for system safety and reliability. Changes in the net metering program may require substantial physical system modifications and energy rate adjustments. Such NEM matters are reviewed by the Guam Public Utilities Commission and Independent Regulatory Commission. GPA's petition to modify the Net Metering Rider Docket 1904 is currently before the PUC, and on May 20, 2019, the PUC established an end cap of 26,100 kilowatt, which it will review for the GPA petition. But of August 2020, the total NEM capacity is at 24,363 kilowatts amongst 2,199 net metering customers. Bill 315-62 set a cap of 20% of the total system peak demand, which equates to about 52,200 kilowatts before the benefit of the system impact study or rate burden to non-NEM customers. Bill 31506 to determine the rate GPA must pay for excess energy generated by NEM customers and sold to GPA. This provision clearly violates bond covenants as applying by Mr. John Wayne Iscrier of Orin One Council of the Government of Guam. See at that summary dated October 2nd, 2020 from Mr. Wang. For these reasons noted herein, GPA is not in support of Bill 315-35. I thank you again for the opportunity to testify today, and I'm available to ask your questions in behalf of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beneventi. Now, we will go to Mr. Joe Rosario from Micronesia Renewable Energy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you can indulge, I would like to read Jeff Ficolo's testimony. Unfortunately, Jeff is traveling at the moment, and he's not able to chime in. He did submit testimony, and I will read it on his behalf. And then, after finishing that, I'll get into my testimony. Is that okay?
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, Senator Regal, senators, thank you very much for allowing me to speak on behalf of our solar energy customers and the solar energy industry for this especially important piece of legislation. I support the bill and its intent. The NEM law was signed into law in 2005. The intent was to encourage the adoption of solar energy in the community of Guam. I believe that the NEM law is accomplishing this. The current GPA docket of 10% penetration for distributed generation, or DG, is extremely low for a utility grid of 261 megawatts peak load. A general rule of thumb in the industry before instability problems would be 30%, so increasing the penetration levels to 20% and then requiring a grid penetration study would seem reasonable. The DG solar penetration on Guam has slowed tremendously over the past two years. This is because of the combination of reduction in oil and the ongoing pandemic. Our industry is also now installing solar energy systems coupled with battery storage that not only benefits the utility tremendously with its peak demand, but also gives our customers energy security in blackouts, brownouts, and in storm conditions. These types of installations should not be counted within the 20% proposed penetration level since most of these systems will not be exporting electricity to the grid, but will be self-contained and consumed within the facility. Storage has always been the key to the industry's sustainability, and now with the increasing technology, we can accomplish this. Our firm submitted to the utility and to the CCU a value of solar report completed by a very reputable third-party research, Clean Power Energy Research, who has various solar energy reports, who has done solar energy reports for stateside utilities. In different scenarios within the report, it is stated that the energy that is exported to the utility within various load patterns would determine what the solar energy is worth. If a facility exported energy to the grid during peak demand, this energy will be worth more than the retail rate. We have the capacity to do this now, which would help the utility manage its peak load whether a consumer chooses to self-consume or export the energy. Increasing the penetration levels encourages solar adoption and technology advances in the industry that helps the utility and helps the consumer hedge their energy costs for many years to come. Distributed generation also helps Guam as a whole. As we experienced in Super Typhoon U2 in the CNMI, the power plants in Saipan and Tinian were not damaged. It was the inability of the utility to transport the power to the ratepayers. It took three months on average to erect solar, to erect power poles and transmission lines, and it took up to six months on third-tier auxiliary feeders. 20% of our 418 solar energy systems at the time had battery systems installed. They had power immediately after the storm or after we made minor changes, minor repairs to their systems. I want to bring up two instances with solar farms and DG. When Hurricane Maria hit Puerto Rico in 2017, 80% of all solar farms experienced severe damage to total damage, while 20% of DG systems were damaged. This enabled residents with energy storage to have adequate power in the most extreme of conditions for the three to six months it took the utility to come back online. As we know, in 2018, Super Typhoon U2 devastated Saipan and Tinian. As mentioned, we had 418 solar energy systems installed at the time. Of the 418, 88 received minor damage, with only two with severe damage caused by flying debris. This follows suit with the 20% of DG systems. By the way, all 88 systems were repaired within four weeks. Hurricane Maria was a category 4 storm with 155 mile an hour winds, with gusts up to 182 mile an hour. Super Typhoon U2 was Cat 5 with 180 sustained, with gusts well into the 200s. Although there's quite a bit of difference between the Atlantic and Pacific storms, it's not only going to get worse, it's only going to get worse because of climate change. If a category 5 storm hits Guam with the same force as U2, solar farms will be destroyed. DG will have a better chance of survival. The point I'll try to make is that DG, is that allowing DG to grow 20% or even greater will allow more ratepayers to have energy security and to also save money on power. Currently, there are 38 states and all five territories with net metering policies in place. Almost all still have the retail rate in place for exploitation of energy. Those that have changed their NEM policy have grandfathered their existing customers in. Even in Hawaii, when HECO changed their NEM policy, the program did not change for existing NEM customers. In fact, it even applied to those ratepayers who were pending interconnection approval from HECO. If the NEM program is ever changed in Guam, all existing customers must be grandfathered into the retail rate. Energy that is exported adds to Guam's energy security and is helping the ratepayer hedge their costs for the next 30 years. I have heard the utilities' argument of cost shifting from solar customers to non-solar customers, and although it's a very clever distraction to the discussion, there's white paper research that debunks the cost shifting argument. Research conducted by the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory says that cost shifting is a myth, especially in cases with such low solar penetration. Please bear in mind that Berkeley Lab is a U.S. national laboratory that conducts scientific research on behalf of the U.S. Department of Energy. I can provide the link to the research paper, or I can send it via email to the rest of the panel. I have listened to the argument of DG customers placing burden on the utility to the tune of $3.3 million annually, and that this cost could be shouldered by non-solar customers. Well, if the prestigious Berkeley Laboratory is correct in their research findings, that $3.3 million cost shift is a moot point. That brings me to my final point. There was news reports, both electronic and print, as recent as July 30, 2020, where CCU Chairman Joey Duennas made comments on whether utility rates should increase despite the projected $17 million under recovery by January 2021. Chairman Duennas said that that's something that they'll be prepared to accept and will work that debt off as they go forward. If decisions are made so confidently about the loss of $17 million, why is it that drastic changes are recommended to the NEM program for $3.3 million, especially in a time when ratepayers are so vulnerable? It should be encouraging ratepayers to go solar rather than aggressively pushing to change the program, which only will discourage the use of solar. We must be incredibly careful with the decisions we make. Solar and battery technology is increasing so rapidly that it is now outpacing even the best conventional power plants and centralized generations. Senators, current NEM customers must be grandfathered in, not phased out in the five years as proposed by the utility. Consumers must be protected by law and not have this right taken away from them. Thank you very much, Jeff Ficolo, COO of Micronesia Renewable Energy, and I'll get into mine. Goodness, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, my name is Joe Rosario. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 315-35. For the record, I'm testifying in support of the bill. And also, for the record, I am a net metering customer. I want to address Sections 1 and Sections 2 of the bill. Section 1 shall set the level of penetration for net metering systems to an aggregate capacity level of 20% of the utility's total peak demand. Mr. Chairman and members of committee, there's still a lot of growth potential in the private sector for net metering. I feel that net demand reading programs should continue because there are many positive implications. It allows the private sectors to stay busy working on solar energy systems and allows ratepayers the opportunity to go solar and save money on energy. Well, what does that mean? Well, for the industry, it means jobs. Just here at MRE, we employ more than 40 people, most of which are skilled electricians and certified technicians. We don't rely on foreign labor, so there's very little capital flight. That money stays in Guam circulating in your economy. It also means tax revenue for the government. MRE, like other energy companies, pay their fair share of taxes, and we are happy to do so because we know that it benefits our economy. For the solar customer, it means savings. And depending on whether it's a grid-type system with batteries, it may also mean energy security. And let's not forget the intent of the original NEM metering bill. Bill Number 176 authored by the late Speaker Ben Pangolinen and ultimately signed into law and became Public Law 27-132. The intent of that bill was to encourage ratepayers to explore energy technologies, namely solar. The intent was to encourage the use of solar in a "distributive method where electricity is generated and used at the same location." Furthermore, it was the intent of the legislation to: A) encourage private investment and B) stimulate economic growth. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, the net metering program fulfills this, and allowing more penetration means that the industry thrives and the ratepayers that go solar can save money. Section 2, NEM compensation of not less than the full retail rate. Mr. Chair, committee members, there are many reasons why I went solar in my house. The main reason was to control my energy costs and save money on power. If you ask the 2,000-plus NEM customers why they got solar, I'm sure that 99% of them will say the same thing. The current NEM program allows for you to control your energy costs and save money. I'm hedging my bets, saying that the sun will provide energy cheaper than what conventional energy is going to be able to from now and into the future. I got solar in my home so that I'm not vulnerable to the uncertainties of oil prices and its effects on utility rates. And I'm sure 99% of current NEM customers feel the same as well. Now, do I feel that all current NEM customers be compensated the retail rate for the exploitation of the energy they produce? 100%. It's the program that they bought into. Taking that away from there will be a disservice. Please remember that of the 2,000-plus NEM customers on the program, that majority of them are on long-term agreements. Compensation other than the retail rate will be catastrophic. A good majority of NEM customers are just making ends meet or just barely making ends meet, especially in these times of economic struggle. Some have staggered bill payments just to stay afloat. Please know that utility increases are disproportionate to ratepayer wages. When the utility decides to increase rates, ratepayer wages do not increase accordingly. That's why they go solar. They go solar to protect themselves from having to pay high utility rates. Like me, their belief is that sun energy will be cheaper than that of conventional energy. They're betting that oil and utility rates will increase faster than solar rates, and that's a good bet. The utility is profitable, and to the credit of the employees, they do a fine job. But utility rates will increase. Water rates are increasing. It seems like everything around us is going up, except wages. I implore senators to protect the current net metering customers. Please support this measure and allow the industry to grow and NEM customers to continue to save money. Si doos mahasi pari tepun midu. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rosario, for your testimony. Up next is Mr. Fred Horeki, Legal Counsel for the Public Utilities Commission. Mr. Horeki, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Marsh Titino, Senator Therese Terlali, and Senator Titegui. My name is Fred Horeki. I am the Chief Administrative Law Judge for the Guam Public Utilities Commission. Today, I will present the testimony of the chairman, Jeffrey Johnson, on behalf of the PUC. The testimony we filed is lengthy, but I ask each of you senators to review it carefully because there are a tremendous number of legal defects with Bill 315. The Public Utilities Commission strongly opposes Bill 315. Questions about level of penetration, what rates should be awarded to ratepayers are all matters within the discretion of the independent rate-setting authority, the Guam Public Utilities Commission. The fundamental defect in Bill 315 is it removes many powers and duties that the PUC presently has under law. For example, one is to set rates for excess energy supplied by net metering customers. This bill would make it an absolute retail rate for all customers now and forever for excess energy. That is a rate-making function. The legislature should not be involved in that at all. I'm going to detail the Organic Act and other provisions. The legislature should not be setting the level of penetration for net metering customers. That's something that the PUC has been doing since 2008. So, it's very clear that this bill interferes with authorities of the PUC. It interferes with the independence of this body, the Public Utilities Commission, who by both the Organic Act and Guam law and statute is the body that has jurisdiction over net metering rates, the net metering rider, and what rate should be accorded to each customer. Now, I want to look specifically at some of the provisions of the bill to show you the extent to which this bill interferes with the authority of the PUC. Looking at Section 2, that amends 12 GCA 8505B3. And it basically, at present, the way this works, this concerns excess generation provided by net metering customers. So you know that when a net metering customer provides more energy than it uses, GPA pays a compensation rate. Right now, the statute says that that compensation rate is at a rate, quote, "to be determined by the Public Utilities Commission." But what this bill has done is it strikes out the words by the Public Utilities Commission. Now, can anyone tell me that this is not taking away a present power and authority of the PUC that's guaranteed in law? And I said it does establish a full retail rate. Now, what I read this to mean is that any existing customers will always have the full retail rate, but for excess energy, this would also apply to any future customer. These are not decisions that the Guam Legislature should be making. I know arguments were made by the solar industry about rates, but there is a fire raging in the country right now about whether full retail rate should be provided to net metering customers or whether it should be an avoided cost rate or a value of solar rate. But in any event, these are issues that the PUC has been dealing with since 2008. And if there are going to be any changes in that, it must go through the Public Utilities Commission. So, that section amended, 8505B, goes on to say that the utility shall not petition to change the rate of compensation to existing customer generators whose net metering systems fall within the aggregate capacity limit. So basically, the legislature here would be mandating and ordering that up to 20% penetration, all customers therein are guaranteed the retail rate. That is something that the PUC under law has decided. I know of no evidence showing that 20% is the appropriate rate, and I'll address that in more detail in a moment. But in other words, by preventing the utility from even petitioning the PUC, that again deprives the PUC of the timing of when it considers a petition, what authority it has over a petition. In other words, the legislature would be laying down terms and conditions limiting the authority of the Public Utilities Commission. The amendment goes on to state that the utility may petition to change the rate of compensation for new customer generators after the utility determines the level of penetration of net metering. Now, again, this restricts when the PUC could consider a petition from GPA to change the rates, and what the rate should be are within the discretion of the PUC. Now, I'd like to go back and look at Section 1. Section 1, it, to me, is very unusual that the legislature would be setting the level of penetration of net metering systems at 20%. What evidences before the commission, or for the legislature? What investigation has been done? In fact, this level of penetration is directly contrary to what the PUC has already decided. Mr. Beneventi referred to GPA Docket 1904. In that docket, the PUC set a new level of penetration rate. The level of penetration rate was first set by the PUC in 2008 at 1,000 customers. And the Net Metering Rider, which is now in effect, said that once there are 1,000 net metering customers, the PUC would again examine the issue. In Docket 19-4, GPA came to the PUC to change the rate of compensation, arguing that net metering customers were over 2,000 at that point. What the PUC did after it obtained a detailed study from its consultant, Daymark Advisors, is to set a new penetration level of 10%. Now, that figure wasn't just picked out of thin air. Daymark indicated that actually that was more than most jurisdictions that have penetration levels. So I know Mr. Rosario stated that, oh, 30% is standard. No. Our consultant said that 10% was more than average, and attached to Chairman Johnson's testimony is the portion of their report that deals with the level of penetration level. The PUC said that once there are, it's a 10% penetration or about 261 megawatts of net metering, we will again examine the rates to determine whether any changes should be made. But in Docket 1904, the PUC did not change the compensation rates. They were left at retail rate. They were left at retail rate. But rather than having the legislature just dictate what these rates should be, those again, under all the laws of Guam and the Organic Act, are matters that are determined by the PUC. I submit that it's not even proper at all for the legislature to be involved in setting the compensation rate. That Section 1 also mandates that GPA complete a distribution study. That was already ordered in docket 19-04. The PUC ordered a complete distribution study with cost-benefit analysis and basically indicated that it would not change the rates at all until such a study is done. So this provision is completely unnecessary. What this law would do, it would directly countermand the decision of the PUC in docket 1904. It would disregard the rate that was set by the PUC and set another rate, which according to Daymark is not in accordance with law. Daymark said that most of the levels of penetration were less than 10%. And in fact, when Hawaii reached 10%, there was, it was found that there were levels of difficulty with the circuit systems and problems with generation of the solar energy. So you have to be very careful about wading into something like establishing a penetration level. If there's too much solar in the system on Guam, that's going to adversely affect GPA, and it already has. The NRG plant, the 25-megawatt, has caused numerous under-frequency outages. And the same thing can happen with net metering. If you have too much net metering, you set a level too high, that's going to make the system go down and even potentially crash. So I submit that the legislature should be very reluctant to wade into an issue that demands a lot of attention, a lot of consultant input and advice. And finally, on Section 1, GPA could not approve new applications for net metering systems beyond the aggregate capacity limit. That would mean that the PUC would have no authority to address these issues at all until the 20% penetration level was met. But again, when to address rate petitions about what the rate should be, those are all matters for the PUC to decide. If you look back in the history, you know, I think many people don't understand the Public Utilities Commission. Why was it set up at all? What's its purpose? What does it do? In the late 1970s, ratemaking was under the jurisdiction of the Guam Legislature. At that time, GPA had bonds, federal bonds, to provide for power improvements, and GPA defaulted. And the reason apparently was that the legislature would not provide adequate rates for GPA to pay for its bonds. The federal government agreed that the financing could be done, but it insisted as a precondition that the Organic Act of Guam be amended to provide that there be an independent rate-setting authority in Guam. So the Public Utilities Commission is established through the Organic Act of Guam. And the Guam Legislature itself has basically established a lot of laws and rules that grant the PUC exclusive jurisdiction to deal with rate setting. I think you always have to remember that the purpose of setting up the PUC as an independent rate commission under the Organic Act was to remove the legislature and politics from setting rates at all. It's just not a proper role for the Guam Legislature. Now, the legislature itself, as I mentioned, there are so many numerous laws that give the PUC complete and total jurisdiction and power to establish the rates for net metering customers, the level of penetration for net metering customers, and all aspects of the program. Again, Mr. Rosario referred to public laws 27132 and 2962. Those laws established the PUC as responsible for the net metering program, its implementation, and for the establishment of all rules and regulations. So that was done in 2008. The PUC established rules and regulations. It established the net metering rider. But even since that time, if you review Dr. Johnson's testimony, it has repeatedly addressed all of these issues about the net metering program, what the rates of compensation should be, how many customers should be eligible, what the rules should be. And in addition, under existing law, the very provision that Bill 315 seeks to amend, that establishes that the PUC sets the compensation for excess generation produced by net metering customers. Again, deleting, removing the PUC from the statute is not appropriate. It's unlawful, basically. 12 GCA Section 8506 clearly places the PUC in charge of the rate structure for the net metering program. Bill 315 is completely contrary to all of the provisions of the Organic Act and the existing law. In addition, under existing law, the PUC has regulatory oversight, supervision over GPA. That would be removed by provisions of this bill. Under Section 12105, 12 GCA, it is PUC solely that is responsible for setting the rates for GPA for all services, all power services, including net metering. Bill 315 is contrary to 12105. And finally, on the existing law, we have 12 GCA 12116, which says that no rate shall be established, modified, or abandoned without a public hearing and the prior approval of PUC. Here, Bill 315 would disregard that and establish rates for a net metering customers producing excess and producing penetration levels that have not been approved by the PUC. So this bill is contrary to all the existing provisions of law. The senators should reject a bill which interferes with the powers and duties of the PUC. As a second argument, not only does this bill disregard the independent ratemaking authority of the PUC, it violates the bond covenants and it violates the agreement of the government of Guam, including the legislature, who even passed legislation to not interfere with the powers and duties of the PUC. GPA has a rate covenant, 6.20. It's called the non-interference covenant. And basically, it prevents the government of Guam and the legislature from in any manner impairing the duties and powers of the Public Utilities Commission. Yet, Bill 315, in contravention, seems to ignore the contractual rights of bondholders. That could lead to lawsuits, potentially, because there's no doubt that 315 does remove powers from the PUC. It limits the PUC in the exercise of those powers. And the legislature itself has approved the bond covenants in 12 GCA Section 8113.3, which codifies the non-interference pledge of the government with the powers and duties of the PUC. I want to, in concluding my testimony on behalf of Dr. Johnson, to refer to public law 26-18, which was enacted, I believe, in 2001, and what the legislature said there about the PUC. Elezla Turan Guahan finds that a strong public interest is served by maintaining a strong, independent Public Utilities Commission of Guam, which is independent of the executive and legislative branches. Federal legislation, which authorized the transfer of US Navy electric power assets to the Guam Power Authority under the GPA-Navy Customer Service Agreement, was conditioned on Guam's creation of an independent Public Utilities Commission. Moreover, GPA's bond indenture agreements require the existence of an independent commission. As Mr. Benevente mentioned, the bond counsel, John Wang, of the Oryx Sutcliffe Law Firm in San Francisco, has stated that this bill, 315, does violate the bond covenants, and it raises serious issues of interference with the powers of the PUC under the Organic Act. So for all the reasons that I presented today and have been presented in Dr. Johnson's testimony, the legislature cannot allow this proposed legislation to compromise the powers of the independent Public Utilities Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horeki. I just need to point out a few things I'd like to respond to. First, the assertion that the 20% market penetration level is somehow plucked out of thin air. It is not plucked out of thin air. In fact, it comes from the Daymark report that was commissioned by the PUC. In the report, it says across the United States, the aggregate capacity limit has varied by state and in some cases by utility. Limits range from 0.1% to up to 20% of utilities' peak demand. So I submit it is not plucked out of thin air. It is actually taken from the Daymark report. Yes, it is on the high end of the report, but it is definitely not plucked out of thin air. It's taken directly from a report commissioned by the PUC. Secondly, I also submit that this does not affect the PUC's ability to set rates as the PUC still has the ability to change rates upwards or downwards, change the LEAC rate as it sees fit. What it does do is it sets in place the level of compensation to net metering customers. And that, in addition to that, the net metering program itself was established by a law that was written by a legislature. So the legislature gave the authority to the PUC to establish the net metering program. So I submit that it's the legislature with that authority rests with to alter that net metering program. So with that, I just had to respond to a couple of assertions there that I believe are incorrect. But we will move on from now and allow for other people to testify.
Can I respond to those points?
Sure.
All right. First of all, compensation is rate. When you set the amount that net metering customers will receive for the power they produce, that is setting a rate. With regard to Daymark, Daymark, in the attachment, if you look at Dr. Johnson's testimony, only one jurisdiction set a 20% level. Almost all others were between 1% and 5% or thereabout.
All I was saying is it was not out of thin air. It was from that report. That's all I was saying. I'm not saying it's the norm. I'm saying it wasn't plucked out of thin air.
And based on that recommendation, the PUC set the level of penetration at 10%, which was aggressive, by the way. But that was the recommendation of Daymark, not 20 or 30%, but 10%.
Fair enough. I just wanted to clarify that it was not an arbitrary number. It was a number taken as the high-end number from the Daymark report. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Horeki?
Just finally, one point. You know, you said that the legislature granted the power, but it can take it away. But it can't because the bond covenants prevent the legislature from in any manner interfering with the powers and duties of the PUC. So if the legislature does that, it will be violating the bond covenants.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Horeki. We could probably debate on and on for a while on this subject, but I prefer to move on now to some other testimony. And also that way, we can allow people to ask questions at the end of all the testimony. But thank you, Mr. Horeki. I appreciate your participation in today's hearing. Up next is Mr. Lynn Scott, president and CEO of Guam Energy Solutions. Mr. Scott, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I won't be providing testimony today. I'm here just to listen on behalf of everybody else. As I'm quite satisfied with what I'm hearing is, with the modern technology, I actually now have the ability to not worry about the penetration ratio. With our new products, we have the ability to take every homeowner and pretty much every business off-grid. So as net metering applies, we're interested to see the outcome of this bill as it will just affect our business strategy. So thank you for inviting us. We're here to listen and learn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Next, I have... Next, I have, this is Michelle Vocolo, Micronesia Climate Change Alliance. You're recognized.
Half a day, thank you for having me. My name is Michelle Vocolo, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Micronesia Climate Change Alliance, MCCA. MCCA is a grassroots nonprofit organization dedicated to creating community-centered solutions to the climate crisis. We focus on a wide spectrum of issues pertaining to sustainability, including food sovereignty, waste management, and energy democracy. Today, I'm here to speak about Bill 315-35. While the utilities claim NIM imposes costs on other ratepayers, research throughout the United States suggests otherwise. Multiple studies of the value of solar and net metering have commonly found that there is no net cost to ratepayers and that, in fact, there are benefits that actually reduce costs for everyone. A report by the Bookings Institute states, "The economic benefits of net metering actually outweigh the costs and impose no significant cost increase for non-solar customers. Far from a net cost, net metering is in most cases a net benefit for the utility and for non-solar ratepayers." Referencing the same report that Mr. Rosario stated from the Berkeley Lab, "For the vast majority of states and utilities, the effects of distributed solar on retail electricity prices will likely remain negligible for the foreseeable future." The report also states that there are numerous factors which have a much greater impact on electricity rates than distributed solar, such as the volatility of natural gas prices and energy efficiency. Net metering is a simple, effective policy that supports one of the fastest-growing industries in the United States. The minimal financial impact that the utilities have focused on pales in comparison to the good that could come from a thriving solar industry on Guam. It also pales in comparison to the great harm that would occur to the customers who would seek to use solar or already have solar should net metering be undermined or eliminated. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Vocolo, for your testimony. One moment while I pull up the list. Okay. All right. Mr. Stephen Kider?
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the chairman, the committee, and the senators for allowing me to speak on Bill 315. I'm just a citizen and a net meter customer, and I'll be brief. I'm fully in favor of the bill. I believe anything we can do to encourage further development of renewable energy on the island is a benefit to the entire population of Guam. The financial impact of importing oil to the island and money going off-island to supply the fuel needed to run the power plants is a detriment to the economy. I believe that the jobs created from the renewable energy industry are valuable to the island. And I'd also like to express my disagreement with Mr. Horak about his implication that too much solar power might be, lead to technical problems with the grid. That's simply an investment in modern technology to properly integrate renewable energy into the system. And that's easily dealt with with available technologies. So the implication that there's a danger to having too much... The implication that there's a danger to having too much renewable energy Seems to me, you know, not a very reasonable argument. I think Guam's vision for the future should be to move towards 100% renewable energy As Responsible citizens of this planet because It's better for the environment, it's better for our local economy and I think it's entirely Appropriate for renewable energy to be distributed by GPA overlooked By the PUC and just I think effort should be made to move in that direction. Thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kider, for your testimony. Up next is Mr. David Burlingham. Burlingham.
Hi, I am just listening to this discussion and participation, and I don't have any testimony to give.
Thank you. Then next on the list would be Mrs. Tina Garcia from the Guam Economic Development Authority.
Half a day. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Melanie Mediola, heat administrator. And what we have, what we will be sending to the senators is a comment from Bond Counsel Mr. John Wong To GPA General Counsel Graham Botha with regards to Bill 315. And again, this is just to speak specifically to bond provisions. So if I may, I'll go ahead and read it. Dear Mr. Botha, you have asked for our advice concerning the potential legal effects of proposed legislation. Bill number 315-35 That would, if passed in its current form, amend sections 8503B, Section 3, and 8503B, Section 4 Of Title 12, the Guam Code Annotated, relating to net metering arrangements and other related provisions. This letter, although not intended as a comprehensive legal treatise on the issues raised, Will describe some of the significant risk that would be created by enactment of the proposed legislation. This letter should not be read as taking any position on the advisability From a public policy perspective of encouraging the implementation of renewable energy programs. Summary of conclusions. As authorized by Section 8113-3 of the GPA statute, GPA has included in its senior bond indenture, And this is the primary agreement with its senior bondholders, A covenant by the government of Guam not to limit or alter the rights and powers vested in the Guam Public Utilities Commission In relation to the approval of the rates to be charged by GPA. Bill 315-35 would, among other things, prohibit GPA From levying certain types of fees and charges In connection with net metering arrangements without review of any such arrangements by the Guam PUC. Our view is that the bill enacted would limit or alter the rights or powers of the Guam PUC In a manner that would be a breach by the government of its covenant in GPA's bond indenture. Any transaction that would involve net metering arrangements with GPA, The use of GPA's transmission system, the use of GPA's distribution system, Or the provision of standby or backup power by GPA Must be subject to the approval of the Guam PUC After consideration of appropriate rate-making policies, Including the appropriate allocation of cost on various ratepayer classes. A breach of the government's indenture covenant would be a default under the GPA indenture. Any such default could result in acceleration of the due date Of the principle of GPA's outstanding senior revenue bonds And could subject the government itself to contractual remedies, Including damages for breach of its contract with the GPA bondholders. Background. The Guam PUC was created in the early 1980s In connection with the federal financing bank refinancings Of certain short-term GPA notes, all as described in Section 1423A of Title 49 Of the United States Code Annotated, Section 11 of the Guam Organic Act. One of the refinancings authorized by the Organic Act was required by the United States Congress to be Parentheses, conditioned on the establishment of an independent rate-making authority by the government of Guam, close parentheses. The purpose of the establishment of the Guam PUC was to keep rate-making out of the political arena And to allow utility rates to be established and approved on a business-like basis. The importance of the removal of the rate-making process from the political arena Was further recognized by the Guam Legislature In connection with the authorization of the 1992 public offering Of GPA revenue bonds and again in connection with the authorization Of the 2005 public offering of GWA revenue bonds. The utilities have each included in their respective indenture the authorized government covenant. Section 6.20 of the GPA Revenue Bond Indenture dated December 1, 1992, Under which all outstanding GPA senior revenue bonds have been issued provides as follows. This is a quote from the indenture. The government hereby pledges to the holders of all bonds That the government will not repeal, amend, or modify Chapter 12, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, In any way that would substantially impair the powers, duties, Or effectiveness of the Guam Public Utilities Commission Thereunder in relation to the authority and its rates. The authority includes this pledge of the government in this indenture As authorized by Section 8113.3 of the Act. Close parentheses. Discussion. As a result, the government has made Has made a contractually binding promise to the GPA bondholders As authorized by statute not to limit or alter the rights and powers vested in the Guam Public Utilities Commission In relation to the approval of the rates to be charged by GPA. The proposed legislation would, among other things, effectively Amend the Guam PUC statute by increasing the aggregate capacity limit For net energy measurement calculations and to establish the rate at which customers are to be compensated. The Guam PUC would no longer be empowered to regulate such matters And certain other matters mandated by the legislation. As a result, the proposed bill, if enacted, would limit the power and independence of the Guam PUC As a rate-making authority and would be a breach of the government's covenant in GPA's indenture. The consequences of any such breach are, of course, difficult to predict. In general, under the GPA statute, the government is not contractually liable For GPA's bond obligations. This, however, would be a different case. Here, the government would have breached its own contractual obligation In a manner that could be a default under the GPA indenture. Indenture defaults can result in the acceleration of the bonds, and the government might find itself Liable for significant damages. In addition, of course, the various other Corollary effects of any limitation Or alteration of the Guam PUC rate-making authority in respect of GPA, Including such things as a reevaluation of the GPA's bond credit ratings are beyond the scope of this letter. As you know, any decrease in GPA's credit rating would increase its borrowing costs The next time that it sells bonds. Please let me know if I can clarify any matters raised by this letter. Very truly yours, John Y. Wang. And I will go ahead and send this to you, Senator, for the committee report.
Thank you. This is Garcia. Thank you. Okay, I think Let's see, who is next? There is a Mr. Mark Beauchamp Online, but I understand Mr. Beauchamp was having some Issues with the microphone. Mr. Beauchamp, if you're there, have you resolved those issues with the microphone? Mr. Beauchamp, are you able to speak and provide testimony? No? Okay, you may, of course, submit written testimony to our committee, and we'll be accepting written testimony, I believe, for up to 10 days after the hearing. So you can still submit written testimony. We have online also Mr. Kyle DeHilig. Mr. DeHilig, will you be providing oral testimony today? If so, please turn on your camera and unmute your microphone.
Hi.
Go ahead, you proceed.
Proceed? Okay, sorry, I'm a little disheveled. Could I like adjust myself first or fix up my?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, while we're waiting, I'll go ahead and make sure I recognize all the senators present. I may have missed some as they joined, so I'll just go down the list again and recognize all senators who are present. Senator Theresa Lahey, Senator Kelly Marsh Titano, Senator Mary Camacho Torres, and Senator Telo Titigui. Thank you again, everyone, for joining us this afternoon. Mr. DeHilig, are you, are you prepared now?
Hi, just a couple of seconds. Maybe give me about a minute. Sorry.
Sure. Go ahead. In that case, go ahead and get your testimony ready. Instead, while you're preparing your testimony, I can move on and allow Senators to ask questions of some of the people who have already presented testimony, beginning with Senator. You can go now? Okay. Go ahead.
Appreciate it. Thank you for waiting for me. Okay. Buenos en half a day, Committee on Power and Utilities, the Community and Future Generations. Thank you for sharing your time with me. If you asked me when I was five, what I wanted to be after I graduated high school, Talking about future energy demands and climate and fossil fuels wouldn't have been my shortlist. I wanted to be a pilot. But knowing what I know now, and the climatic effects of fossil fuels has positioned me away from outdated and old energy dependency Towards a new adaptable way of life. Although our struggle with fossil fuels started way before our generation's time, Now is the opportunity for intergenerational collectivity To move upwards and towards new heights with incentivizing our community to invest in solar energy. This is the accountability that we seek from our government when it comes to upholding environmental laws. Public Law 3546 increased Guam Power Authority's portfolio goals to 50% by 2035 And 100% by 2045. Any opposition to this bill is a rejection towards crafting an attainable carbon zero future And is a slap to everyone's rights for energy autonomy. The youth of Guam is ready for a cleaner future. So let's continue to work together, to work more efficiently, and to work for a better future. And Dankulana Sutusmaasi, Madaming Salamapal, and Kiniso.
Thank you, Mr. DeHilig, for your testimony. Okay, before we proceed, I would like to just ask Mr. Burlingham, if you could just, for the record, state Who you are here representing or in what capacity are you participating in today's hearing?
I was requested to listen to the hearing by Guam Power Authority. I'm not presenting any testimony at this meeting or at this time. I'm just listening to testimony.
Are you a consultant for the Guam Power Authority or?
I have been a consultant for GPA.
Okay. Thank you. All right, with that, I believe we have exhausted our list of people who have signed up to testify this afternoon. I'd like to allow now senators to ask questions of anyone who's provided testimony today, beginning with Senator Theresa Lahey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all who have testified. If I could just maybe direct this to the PUC's representative, Mr. Turney Horeki. So right now, the current Cap is at 10%. And according to your testimony, we are At, we're currently at 24,363 kilowatts, and the cap 10% would be 26,000 kilowatts. How soon do you expect that could be reached or maybe GPA? Yeah, either one.
First of all, I do think it could be reached. I'm not sure the exact time, but it could be a matter of a year Or even possibly less. But I want to clarify, the 10% that the PUC said, actually, it is not a cap in the sense That it in any manner says that there couldn't be net metering beyond the 10%. What it says is the order of the PUC said That once 10% is reached, PUC will again Look at the issue of what the compensation should be to net metering customers, but It does not imply any necessary action in changing the retail rates Or any other action, but it'll depend on the facts and circumstances presented to the PUC at that time.
All right, thank you. Is there a? And then it provided your, your order, I think 19-04, provided that there would be A distribution study and then a cost-benefit analysis. Has the distribution study been completed or?
I don't think it's been completed. I believe it's being worked on. Mr. Benevente referred to it earlier, but I I know it is in process. And as our testimony pointed out, you know, there have been a number of senator of integration studies. There's, there's already been one completed which looked at all aspects of renewable energy And their impact on the system. I believe over the years GPA has done about, the number I had was 57 studies On integrating renewable energy into the system.
Mr. Beneventi, is the, is there any Part of the distribution study that's been completed that indicates a detriment if we Work to adopt 20% versus 10%?
First of all, yes, the study is ongoing and we'll get it done very shortly. And that's part of the reason why you're seeing some of our consultants listening in today to understand some of the issues that are being addressed, no? And again, there is some indication that, of course, there are in certain areas Problems because we have, we do have some circuits that are already 90, the loading from From solar PV is about 96% at certain periods of time. So again, it's too early for us to really piecemeal provide information on that, but We are certainly going to address because the PUC is, like Fred is correct, They will address again our petition which looked at the parity of rates And the, and because it is not really our intention to stop What you call, let's call it community, let's call it solar PV from homes Or in your customers. It's really net metering kind of tastes defined really as Solar, a solar rooftop, a rooftop solar system provided whole credit at retail rate. That's the issue. But even like Hawaii would stop its net metering in 2015 Has come up with two different models which allows more and more solar PV to allow penetration into the system. Now, you know, the, the recommendation of 10% of our 261 peak, that's the peak time. Now, you know, the, the recommendation of 10% of our 261 peak, that's the peak time is in the evening. Typically, when, when that number is said, is really said by those industries that really have the peak time in the daytime. So when the solar is coming in, you can identify how much the percentage could be and what impact it has. Our daytime load is, say for 260 is around 220, so really, we're over the 10% and above, but again, these are the details that we're trying to put together, Senator, at this point, and we will put one, because again, in 1904, a lot of the arguments were put forward by ourselves, Daymark, other, other proponents, and in the, the PUC did decide that we need to do this study and come back to them again before they, you know, before they even consider anything beyond that. And so we're, you know, your question earlier, how soon can, can the 26 megawatts, 26,000 kilowatt be reached? Well, on the average, is looking around close to 10, 10 units a month that's been coming on the line more recently. Based on that, you're probably looking at maybe anywhere from a year to 18 months before, you know, they reach that cap. But again, also Fred has said, we're not, we're not going to stop anyone from putting more on. It's just that every time more and more come on and is uncontrolled, it is hurting the, it is hurting the system at this point, no?
All right, is there a, a plan that exists from after that public law was passed where the, the solar requirement was increased to 100% by a certain year? It was, Mr. Dahilig referred to that law, but has there been any other, you know, more recent plan by GPA that, that shows us how we're going to get there?
Yes, the public law was just passed earlier this year, I think in March, to go 40, go by 50% by 2035 and 100% by 2045. GPA is preparing its integrated resource plan, and in that is looking at the next target, which is the 2035 target of 50%. Or personally, with all the renewables that we have contracted for, and hopefully the last one that we, that we're going to contract for, that just went through the OPA, will be, there will, there won't be an additional protest and that's awarded. That will mean that by 2020, around 2023, 25% of our energy will be from renewable. And we're beginning now, and again, to complete the integrated resource study, which we're going to file with the PUC, which will, which will look seek about another close to 200 megawatts, if you will, to get to the 50%. And all of this are coming together, you know, as that plan, so yes, we, we are moving forward with that goal.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll wait for the next run.
Thank you, Senator Lahi. Senator Kelly Marsh Titano.
Sutusmasi, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate everybody's testimony, and I believe I understand the intent of the bill, or at least, it looks to me there are a couple of intents, and I think a lot of this really rests on, and it's been, some of what's been discussed, is making sure that we have steps in place, but not just steps in place that get us to that end goal, but that there are assurances and incentives, something, something that really helps us understand that we're going to get there. And so I, I think that this is working towards making sure that we get to the 20%, and you know, it sounds like for GPA, they, they do have these goals and they are developing steps and plans, but I guess, at least for me, it's the assurances. Is there anything in the plans that provides us some understanding of assurances that there are those incentives, there are those timelines, or there, there is something that's, that's propelling us, removing us in a certain way toward these goals? So I don't know if Mr. Benevente or, perhaps he would be the best one to speak on this, or Attorney Hareki?
Thank you, Senator. We'll provide a lot of the information we have contracted for, and in fact, some of these projects are already rolling of the, being worked on. If you're heading north on Route 15 towards Anderson on the right side, just past Marble, they've been clearing and grading that. That's a 60-megawatt facility to come on the line in 2022. Another one in Danden for 60-megawatt. They're completing the design for that one so that they're to move forward. So again, all of the, we have contracted for a lot of this, and last one to be contracted for maybe in the next, this month, and that will give us 25% by 2022. And the next step is again to go to the PUC, and as was noted in the last PUC meeting, GPA has to formally file its next steps of renewables, which we are. And a lot of that is really had to, we had to look at what the system could take and, and and what we had to upgrade in the infrastructure to allow for the renewables, because I'm sure you won't, no one wants their power to be going on and off as you start putting all of these renewables forward, so you know, we're constantly working on that, and Mr. Burlingame there is in fact one of our key consultants, there's, you know, in this evolving industry. And so again, we look forward to, to get to the, of course, the 25% in the more near term, and then to the 50% by before 2035.
And so you mentioned 2 60-megawatt facilities, if that's the right term, two that are going up. Was there a third one? I wanted to make sure I understood that.
That's correct. This is a, consists of a total of 40 megawatts, approximately 20 megawatt in two naval facilities, one on Naval Base Guam and one in NCS Punggajan. And that, that is the model or the future. That project involves full-scale battery that takes all the energy that is generated in the daytime and utilized in evening or any other time of the day. So that's a full-scale PV plant, a solar PV plant with batteries. That contract was protested and went through the OPA, the OPA rule in GPA's favor, and therefore, barring any additional protest within the 14-day period, they're, they are allowed to file and go to the Superior Court if they deem so, if they deem they wanted to do so. If that doesn't happen, then it's going to go move forward to the CCU for approval in this CCU meeting this month, and then on to the PUC for their approval. And that is 11 cents a kilowatt hour with battery and everything. So again, that will now make it 120 plus 40, 160 plus 25, about 185 mega, 185,000 kilowatts of utility scale renewables. And then coupled with the 24,000 that solar PVs on the island, now you're looking at about 200 megawatts within the island by around 2023.
Okay, well, thank you for outlining that. I'm going to continue to, to look at that, because like I said, you know, I think at the end of the day, we want to do what's right by the community. We want to do what we can to move to cleaner energy and reduce rates, but we also are looking for those assurances that there is that steady movement that we can gauge and make sure it is ongoing. So I'll just stick with that for now, Mr. Chair, Sutusmasi, for allowing me to ask the question.
Thank you, Senator Kelly Marsh Titano. Senator Telo Titagui?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. I'd like to thank everyone who's here today to provide testimony, and I greatly appreciate if, if I can get the testimony of Joseph Rosario. I didn't see it in the file that you provided the senators there, so greatly appreciate that. If you can send it to the chair directly to me, so it gets here faster, and then I can review it, as well as Gita, very important to, to hear from Gita, appreciate it. Tina, if you have my email address, if you can send it. Regarding the concern of bond covenants is, is very concerning, but even more concerning is the fact that, you know, we, solar energy is, is the way to go, actually. And I, and I believe that too, we have to do it at a pace that doesn't jeopardize anything or definitely what we have on, online right now. There's a lot of issues with being able to power up the hospital, power up other entities on this island, that's important, and as soon as we start seeing more of a technology into our battery operate, our batteries, to be able to hold some of this energy, I think we're going to probably exceed, you know, that estimated of 10% above that. And that's going to be the driving factor in this whole solar panel industry, is the, the battery, you know, to be able to consume that. It's going to make a big difference. Mr. Benevente, how, what are the rates, what are, at what rate are consumers currently compensated for supplying energy to the, to the power grid?
The, the net metering rate right now is about, about 18.1 cents per kilowatt hour, 18.1 for residential solar PV homes.
Is there a difference between residential and, and commercial?
Yes, because it's really depending on what, depending on what they are avoiding. Commercials is probably around 12 cents or so per kilowatt hour.
Mr. Benevente, how many households are considered off-grid and are on self-sustaining power generation system 24/7, on a 24/7 basis?
I'm not aware of any, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and again, thank you, Mr. Hareki, for, for all that information. That was an extensive testimony, and I will sit and dissect it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titagui. Senator Mary Camacho Torres?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is certainly a very complex topic and somewhat polarizing, because you've got, on one hand, the advocates for renewable energy, people concerned with climate change, and then you've got the utility agency and the regulatory agencies that are dealing with, at this present time, trying to get the obsolete technology and power generating plants retired and replaced by more efficient plans, and, and I think that that's where we're at right now, if I'm not mistaken, with regard to building a, a new plant and taking the, the older ones offline. So I, I can see and appreciate the, the, the process by which we arrive at our, our goals, which ultimately, and mandated by law now, is to go into a more renewable energy scheme in, in the, in the very near future. I, I think what we, what we need to be reminded of though is, is, and Mr. Hareki, you, you laid it out very clearly, I think, and, and gave me a lot of reason to, to consider what exactly we're proposing to do with this bill. Because I think, I think with everything, while we, while we aspire to certain thresholds, we have to be cognizant of where we're actually at in the process of getting there, and and, you know, what, what would be the most reasonable steps, next steps, as we progress towards a more renewable energy platform? I, I don't have any questions right now. I, much of the testimony I think requires me to, to do a deeper dive into the issues really, and, and what the, what, what all sides, what the implication of, of all sides would be to the power generation on Guam, and ultimately what the, the, the rate adjustment would be. Because as I recall, Mr. Benevente, in one prior briefing that GPA gave to the senators, you were presenting to us the, the effect of net metering and how at a certain point, it actually causes the cost to the rate pairs to be, to be increased, because there's some, there's some cause and effect, right, with having?
Senator Torres, I'm sorry, Senator Torres, I think you, you're on mute. If you could take yourself and just repeat the last couple sentences?
Oh. Excuse me, something went over my keyboard and triggered it. No, I was just asking, Mr. Benevente, I think, I think what we have to, what I wanted you to, at one point, you, you had briefed the senators and, and you were discussing how there has to be a measured approach to bringing renewable energy into the picture, people on the grid into the scheme, because there's a, there's a, there's a, whenever there's too much solar generation, it, it can have an effect on the pricing because of the compensation to the regular rate pairs. Is that correct? There's always a cause and effect when you have too much of one that it affects the, the the distribution of power and, and all of that, and essentially the rates to the average customer. Is that correct? I'm trying to remember.
That's correct, Senator. One part technically, in the daytime, you, you only have so much load and you, and you only generate power in the daytime from solar PV. When you have too much in the systems, you're going to have to shut down all the other generators to be able to accept that, otherwise what happens then is, is, oh, you know, if you shut down all the other generators and the cloud goes by, and the solar PV stops, stops generating, and you, of course, you're going to have blackouts in the system. So we limit the amount of energy that's produced in solar PV in the daytime without batteries. They have to have batteries from henceforth to move that energy to the latter parts of the day. In terms of the compensation, yes, is, and again, that's part of our decision in 19-04, is that non-solar PV rooftop customers are offsetting at full retail rate. That means they're not paying any part, any cost of the system improvement, operation, maintenance, and, and so all of the 52,000 customers, the 2,000 on solar, on solar PV homes are not paying anything, and the 50, the remaining 50 are absorbing the rest of the cost. But right now, you're not seeing rate increases, but if in fact a day comes that we need to file a rate, then that's when you're going to see the full burden of those increases. So there could be a parity, there could be a balance somewhere, and that's kind of what we're searching for, and that's what we're working with the PUC moving forward to try to attain. But right now, even Mr. Rosario mentioned that we had said, it's about $3.8 million a year that's non-net metering customers, in our opinion, subsidize solar PV homes. You keep adding on to that, and you know, that's a lot of, there was a lot of money that could go into infrastructure. So that's all, but again, we could proceed, the, to proceed forward with the PUC to establish some, some compensation rate structure that actually, you know, works for all rate customers at GPA.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for reminding me about that. But I, I think what, what I, I want us to all understand is that, you know, GPA is not wanting to keep us in the dark ages, and in fact, what GPA is trying to do is get some of those older technologies that are, that are not only obsolete because of the emissions that are already beyond EPA standards, but, you know, you're, you're actually progressing, and ultimately, we do want to get to a point where we have mostly renewable energy things and, and that we're, we're more in line with the, the climate change initiatives to reduce carbon emissions and, and the like, and I, I think we can all appreciate that, but we also have to be reminded really how far, how far we have to go still and, and the progress that we're making towards that goal, and, and that's kind of where I'm trying to just bring us back to a practicable, a practical point, right? Like, we want, we want to go so far, but we're really not positioned presently to go Like, we want, we want to go so far, but we're really not positioned presently to go that far. And maybe that's a balance that, that we have to also think about when we start enacting policies, right, that direct certain actions of GPA and not the PUC, but GPA. Those are just my general thoughts. I just, I just wanted to express that it's, it really is far more complex than anyone can probably digest in a two-hour public hearing. And so I appreciate all your testimony and we'll pay close attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. All right. Do any of my colleagues have any other questions they'd like to pose? Senator Chalahi?
Thank you. This one's for Gita. So the letter from the Bond Council says that the bill, it would violate the bond covenants. However, can you just remind me, does it say that the setting twenty percent versus ten percent violates bond covenant or just that the provisions of the bill that, that deny the PUC the rate-making authority?
That is correct, that it is the, it is, any provision that would replace the PUC authority to set rates would, would be a violation of bond covenant, does not speak to the actual percentage. So we would have to work with Bond Council, PUC.
And Mr. Herke, has the PUC ever set rates where they grandfathered in rates for different people? Or, you know, set rates for different people who are at different levels? As, as is being proposed by some of the testimony to grandfather companies who, you know, joined the net metering program a while ago, that they be operating under a different set of rules than those as we go forward?
We, we have not yet. To date, all net metering customers, first of all, the, the energy they produce for their own use is compensated at the retail rate. And similarly, the excess power that they produce is also compensated by GPA at the retail rate. I, I might add that on two, two occasions so far, the PUC has not granted GPA requests to change the compensation from retail rate. But the purpose in setting the ten percent level is that the time that that's reached, the PUC would again, look at the question as to whether the, the rate should be changed. So in terms of grandfathering, that, that is a big issue because GPA in doc at nineteen zero four had raised the argument that the current customers should only have retail rates grandfathered for, I think it was five to seven years. Now, what this bill would do is absolutely forever guarantee existing customers retail rate. And that, that may not be appropriate. That's the kind of issue that the PUC would examine, give a lot of attention to. But to have the legislature just forever say that all existing customers are grandfathered, that's not consistent with what's going on in other jurisdictions at all. Hawaii, a number of jurisdictions in the States have changed the compensation. And then, of course, it brings up the question of new customers. What do you do with new customers? You, you might have some grandfathering period for existing customers. But new customers, it could be that at some time, at some level of penetration, the PUC could consider reducing retail rate to what they call avoided cost, which is more like the LEAC rate or what they call value of solar. So there are other possibilities longer term for, for new customers, but you can't, you can't really treat them all the same. So these are things the PUC always looks at very hard. And, and I have to indicate, the PUC has been, I would say, very strong in protecting the net metering program and assuring that it's fair and creating an environment whether, when net metering can continue to thrive. Because still, you know, you can argue, we're not at a high level of customers. I don't know what the number is now, whether it's four or five percent. But you know, we're still, you know, there could still be possible growth. So, so I, I certainly don't want to leave the senators with any implication that PUC is not in favor of encouraging net metering because that is definitely contrary to the fact. We've, we've, over the years, and we've handled many, many issues. That's why I'd ask you to look at our testimony again. You know, we're not just kind of one or two times examining issues. Over the years, we have had many dockets dealing with net metering, you know, what the level of penetration should be. And it's something we always take seriously and usually get consultants to address issues like that. So, thanks.
Thank you. When you, when the PUC set ten percent, did they make any findings of harm above ten percent?
Actually, the consultant suggested that possibility. The consultant said, the reason they picked ten percent was that in Hawaii, when the penetration level was above ten percent, that's when the system started to have issues and circuit problems. So the consultant did feel that there was a possibility, if you set the penetration level too high, that yes, that, that could cause problems, the under-frequency outages I mentioned earlier. And I know some of the studies done by GPA also, we ordered a major study on the impact of solar in twenty seventeen. And that, that docket suggested that there, yes, there is a point definitely. And net metering, remember, is a little different than the utility scale solar. When GPA builds a twenty-five megawatt plant or a sixty megawatt plant, you know, they, they can integrate that into the system. But many of the net metering systems don't have battery storage. In fact, most of them. Although the solar industry has indicated that that will be done in the future, it's still the case that the power produced by net metering doesn't have that solar backup. So, so these are concerns that have to be looked at carefully. And our consultant, Daymark, certainly did consider them. Probably in the distribution study that we ordered of GPA, they will look more carefully at issues like that, the penetration level, what the penetration should be.
All right. And I do remember, Mr. Beneventi, you talking to us about, about solutions for that, for the issues that, if any, that solar net metering raises in your circuit or, yeah, in your system and that you, you were examining ways to deal with those as well. So.
Yes, that's correct Senator, including we do have another petition in front of the PUC. Yes, the customer itself can provide, we require batteries for all future net metering customers because the system is experiencing this difficulty. The batteries could be provided by themselves or by GPA. And again, that's, we follow with the PUC for a rate to allow customers to opt in to us providing the battery when they come in so that they just provide their solar PV and we'll take care of the battery storage of that portion. So again, that's another petition before the PUC being addressed at this point. And, and again, that's, that's an indication that we are not trying to stop net metering or, or solar rooftop investment. The issue is about whether it's a full compensation at some point, we need to balance that out because as more and more customers, the subsidy gets bigger and bigger, the other customers are going to have to pay more. That's.
Appreciate that. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you again.
Thank you Senator Chalahi. Anyone else, any other senators with any other questions? Please, go ahead Senator Tidaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, you know, John, when you start looking into those batteries, because you know, even Tesla at this time is still having a difficult time for their storage batteries that we were talking and even Fred was mentioning about it. But, you know, on a, an environmental perspective, some batteries releases, release gases still and it's not environmentally friendly. So when you go after those batteries, please, I think the latest technology is a lithium, lithium battery. So please, John, when you start looking into that, okay?
Yeah.
Just want to make that comment, Mr. Chair, because, you know, you can go through so many different kinds of batteries and then you find out that it's really not environmentally friendly on some of them. And that's why the issues that we're having moving forward.
And you're correct Senator, because everything is evolving, battery systems, PV systems, it continues to evolve. So again, we're trying to learn as much. All right. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Senator Tidaway. Anyone else with any more questions? If not, I will go ahead and close. I'd just like to add a few comments. Speaking of batteries, Tesla actually has dropped a bombshell recently. Massive, massive breakthrough in battery technology. I encourage all of you to look it up. It's a simple Google away. They're saying it'll increase by five hundred percent more power in their batteries. They made huge breakthroughs with battery technology. We are just on the cusp of a revolution in battery technology. They're just one of many, many companies all competing with one another to produce the best battery technology. And I think that leads me to a question actually from Mr. Lynn Scott. You mentioned something about adjusting your strategy going forward. Are you talking about battery technology? Is that what you're referring to?
Absolutely. We are the exclusive dealer for Blue Planet's lithium ferrous phosphate battery that has a fifteen-year warranty and a twenty-year plus lifespan. As you're aware of, from the Island Sustainability Conference back in March, the governor signed the Blue Planet Alliance hundred percent renewable by twenty forty-five. And as the Blue Planet exclusive dealer on Guam, we have brought both the residential and the commercial batteries to Guam and will be distributing them here locally. So.
I guess what I was getting at, when I heard you say adjusting your strategy, it made me think and wonder, what did you mean by that? And I'm wondering if you mean pursuing a strategy where people are off-grid. Is that what you meant?
We have the capability to do that, but as you know, and I've supplied testimony before you for years now, our core is still energy conservation first. I am not a produce power at all costs first guy, right? I believe in energy conservation first, produce second, right? John Beneventi and I go way back, right? And he knows how much I believe in his DSM program. And I will support him in that DSM program for as long as there is breath in my body. I think that's one of the greatest things that a local utility can do. I think they're doing amazing things now with the soon-to-be rolled-out commercial DSM program. So for residential and commercial cash rebates, I think that is fantastic. I think we need to reduce energy consumption and with all the senators that are here, I, I think you really need to focus on energy conservation as much as you do on solar production. And so I would encourage bills in the future to do that very thing as well as solar power production and energy storage. So I think we're headed in the right direction as an island. I think it's a must that we help with several things. One, local workforce, I think Joe, and Joe and I have been on opposite sides for a lot of things over years as competitors in industry, but the fact that he's employing forty individuals now, I say, thanks, Joe, right? I'm at less than that, right? I'm at twenty-five at the present time. I think I saw something in the newspaper the other day that President Trump just awarded Burt Johnson over at the Trades Academy a grant. And I think if we can get more of our local boys in the Trades Academy for electricians and HVAC and I think I can't thank him enough for, for helping our island in that regard. So the more things that we can do like this and the more local guys we can get to work in the trades will help Joe, myself and our other, other guys. You know, the more we can do, the better, right? So energy conservation, the more guys we have in the industry, right, the better off we all are locally. So. I, I'm happy to be sitting here watching this and listening to this and, and so I'm just ten years strong now. We're still going. Joe's catching up. I think he's at five or six years. And it's too bad the other guys aren't in there because there's another company out there, the Hagen Crew that are ten years going and they hire locally as well. So I, I think through this pandemic, this is a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And just for the record, Mr. Hagen did submit written testimony, which will be of course, shared with everyone in our committee report. His written testimony was in favor of the measure. So with that, thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you everyone. I'd just like to close now with a little bit of explanation behind the bill. So really, the, the main intent of the bill is first and foremost to protect current NEM customers. And the reason for that is I am concerned about the PUC deciding to reduce the, the the compensation level from the retail rate, which is the current rate they charge everyone, to a lower rate because that'll affect customers particularly who are locked in already to long-term deals. So that's the first impetus for the bill. And the secondary one, of course, is to encourage growth of the NEM program. So, and really my thinking behind this is, and this is what I was kind of leading towards with talking with Mr. Scott and about the, the batteries. Well, when I heard him mention change of strategy, I was just thinking, I think a lot of people will be changing their strategy if the compensation rates are not favorable. If the compensation rates aren't favorable with the tech, the way technology is advancing right now, it won't be long before you see people leave the grid. And then you'll begin to see many people leave the grid. And the more and more people that leave the grid, the weaker the grid becomes. You're going to have a situation in the future, maybe five years from now, ten years from now, but it's very near, where you're going to have massive people, amounts of people leaving the grid because the technology is so affordable, they're going to say, you know what? I'm just going to put on solar and batteries on my house. I don't need the grid. And they're going to leave the grid and what's going to happen is you'll have less customers, less people on the grid. And then you're actually going to start to develop two grids. You're going to have sort of a public grid and then eventually what's going to happen, if you get enough private individuals, guess what will happen? Some businesses can come along and say, all you private individuals are separate now. You have your own separate system with your own solar and whatever else and batteries. Hey, why don't you guys link up together? We'll connect you guys and we'll create your own grid. Because grids create stability by nature. So because of that, you're going to end up with two different grids. You're going to have a public grid and a private, completely private individual grid that is all linked up together. And that's, what that's going to do is the public grid is going to be made up of those who can't afford the solar systems upfront. And the private grid is going to be made up of those who can afford to go off-grid. That's what I'm trying to avoid here. I think the grid should be a unified grid with everyone on it. And the way to do that is to bring people along with the growth of the technology and to encourage, encourage more people to join the grid with solar and other renewable energies, whatever they can, encourage the net metering program so that we don't develop two grids, a private grid and a public grid. And that's the main impetus behind this bill. I'm thinking ahead to the future. I'm telling you, the battery technology is there already. It's only going to get better. And if we go down a route where there's not enough support for people like, who want to get on the NEM program, if there's not a support, eventually they're just going to leave the grid. So with that, I'd like to thank everyone for their testimony. I do understand this is a very complex and complicated issue, but nonetheless, it is something that we need to be talking about and we need to start planning ahead and really thinking ahead for the future. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearings within ten business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at two three eight Archbishop Flores Street, suite nine oh six at the DNA Building in Hagatia. You may also send your statements to us at S E N dot C R I D G E L L. You may also send your statements to us at s e n dot C R I D G E L L at teleguam.net or you can send it by fax to four seven five four seven six eight. Thank you all for your participation. This virtual public hearing is now adjourned. It is two fifty PM in the afternoon. Thank you again, everyone, for your attendance and your participation today.